We'll go ahead and call this meeting of May 1st, 2023. No, it's not December 1st, 2023 to order. And if you would all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carrie, could we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Councilmember Shippers.
Here.
Ellen Bass.
Here.
Ingalls.
Here.
King.
Mayor Philkins.
Here. And at this time, if we could get a motion to approve the agenda. It's been amended, so I'll note that.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda amended to include a change order from the previous bid for North Boulevard under City Manager Report Item 5C.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King. Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Philkins.
Yes, motion carries. At this time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask if you come up to make a comment, if you would please state your name, and then if you would write your name and your address for the clerk, it's greatly appreciated. And if you would please keep your comments to three minutes or less, that's also greatly appreciated.
Repetitive.
Oh, and I will say tonight, just because there's, you know, two or three big topics, that if you've heard comments that are the same as your comments, if we can try not to be repetitive, we want to hear everything that everybody has to say, but just so we can get through and everybody has a chance to speak.
Hello. Good evening. Bill Barnett. Hope everyone's having a good night tonight. It's May 1st, and we've got snow. How about that?
Mm-hmm.
I'm here to support the Farmers Market Organization. You guys have done a great job to bring that into our community. Marcus in the council, mayor, thank you. Very well done. It's a great asset, and it's being used, I think, just perfectly. And it's been a great asset to the community, to the farmers, small businesses, people that maybe don't get out, and they show up there. I just see it busy. There's not too many businesses as vibrant as that is. So it's been awesome, and I want to thank you for putting that in there. And I've had a chance to watch it. I'm not an expert with Farmers Market stuff. I am, you know, a person who's lived here a long time. When the Farmers Market was on the lakeside, it was beautiful, shaded, covered. I thought a poor decision was made. It was moved to the parking lot, kind of merged people with cars. And with that, it ended up in a death of an elderly citizen because of a car that went backwards into the person. I don't know if the accelerator stuck, there was an electronical or a mechanical issue, but there was a death that happened at that Farmers Market. I don't want to see that happen again, and I support what Mary's been doing and her team and the people that have come. I think the trucks are a good idea to have out front for buffers because they don't allow what would be people backing up constantly. It's a nightmare that I have. I don't want to see the city. I guess you weren't liable on that, and it was a car accident, but accidents happen, and they don't, you know, people don't mean to do this stuff, but I don't want to see another one happen. And putting the parking out front where I see a lot of people coming from across the street, from the municipal lot, entering, they don't come in and stay with the sidewalk, they come in everywhere. And some of the kids play back there, just people are going back, and a lot of seniors. So I really think it's best just to leave it as is, to let Ms. Galvanic take a look at that and talk. There's issues with the other groups, and they have their parking, I know now, and I kind of wish you would have brought that in, Mary, into that conversation. Have all three groups come here, work this out, and not have any hard feelings, but they've, you know, they've been treated differently, and I don't know that that's right. Marcus is an excellent communicator. He's really good at that, and he can work through these things, and I would set him free to do that. But I didn't support the letter I read, and I wish the city didn't do that, and I wish you would change that, just go back to how you should have it, which is let Mary run it, don't micromanage, work with her, not against, and take in consideration the other groups. Used to be the council on aging building there, I mean, they were really pinched in there. There were some spots on the, on the street, but I don't know if it's worse or better now, but certainly keep everyone's interest in mind, but I would ask you to please do what she wants. She really knows what she's doing. She has shocked me with her efforts.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Keep up the good work. Thank you. Good luck.
Can I just add something?
Hi, I am Mary Galvanic, the maker of the ruckus and the Farmers Market. I am just here to say that we, to anyone who doesn't know who's sitting there, the city council was gracious enough to meet with our market team at 4:00 PM today. They did propose kind of a map where we would all be kind of put behind.
Carrie, could you please address the.
Oh, yeah, to, where we would all be put behind the farmers' trucks and kind of backed by some dumpsters, and it actually looks like it takes up 28 parking spots is the proposed thing. And I know this has a lot to do with, with the parking in the area and in this entire lot around the, the market building. What we have done in the last two years and what we're proposing that we continue to do, I love the extra handicap parking you guys put in the front. I am constantly, 50% of my day is helping, being a personal shopper to our handicapped customers down at Market. And I help them, I make sure that their, I use their wheelchairs as a measurement of how I should set up my rows of vendors. We really consider our handicaps. So those two handicap spots up front are gorgeous. I love that. But we would only take 10 spots in the front, and then I have some farmers who have been heroes to our community for decades, feeding all of us healthy, fresh, local produce for decades, and I would like to continue to offer them a backup spot near their booth, which would be five spots in the back of the building. The other five, or is it six spots in the back of the building, we could release back to general parking. We don't need our able-bodied vendors to have pull-up parking to this market. We don't need our young vendors to have that. We don't. So giving that back, I believe that we would be at 15 spaces that we would be utilizing, and we would be giving back 28 spaces. So I can see as this is an issue with parking, we are actually on the better end of that issue with our original plans that we've been operating with for the last two years. This market has made a huge impact. I mean, just the income that a young baker named Maddie Cakes is able to make for herself as she goes off to college. Gloria Roderick, who is sitting behind me now, has been able to continue to come to Market because we will, and our nearby farmers to her, her friends and her community, will help her unload, help her put up those tables, give her that backup spot. She does not have to retire until she wants to. And as a young farmer, that's what I want to see when I'm 80. I want people to be supporting me and feeling grateful for the work that I've done to feed the community, and so I extend that to our farmers there. What we are proposing.
For three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'll be very quick. I'm Billy Johnson. I'm with Grand Travis Sauce Company. I'm a vendor at Mary's Market. I've seen the proposal. I do markets throughout the state. I have a small team of people that do markets throughout the state for us. Safety is obviously number one. We don't want an incident with anybody getting hurt. We don't have a million-dollar marketing budget. We need the exposure, the front spaces. We can't be backed by porta-potties. We can't be backed by dumpsters. None of you would go into a restaurant or a store that has open trash next to your lettuce. You're not going to do it. It's unhealthy, it's unsanitary, it's unsafe. Farmers Markets are, I need that for my business to grow. We all need it for our businesses to grow. This is my, my business is my comeback story. I'm nine years drug-free. Grand Travis Sauce Company is all that I have, and these businesses are all that we have. If you reduce us, if you put us into a spot where we won't have the exposure, it will be unsafe. It's going to limit our income. I pulled the numbers today. I did $8,000 in retail sales from the Cadillac Farmers Market alone. If that's not a big deal to anybody, I'll take an $8,000 check. I mean, we need the space. It is vital. Small businesses are the backbone of the company, the backbone of the world. We need the space, we need the exposure, we need the safety. We have to. It's, it's all there is to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Marla Courtney, and I am actually the other market manager for the night market here in Cadillac. One of the things, a couple of things I want to talk about tonight is the safety is a concern. Right now, I'm actually using the same format the Farmers Market is using with the food trucks. What makes it nice is that we have the food trucks there. It does provide a safe area for the kids that are in some of these programs, such as 4H. They do hula hoops, they ride the smoothie bikes. That all is really important right there because we are able to keep an eye on them. If you move it to the side or the back, then it's going to become a little bit more difficult. Also, the way it's set up now is you can drive around the backside of the parking lot utilizing both the entrances and the exits. One of the things, too, is I've noticed that there is, there could be a little bit better communication between the markets and the things that are happening in the city and the commons. There's a lot going on, and simple conversations and meetings could be really beneficial to all of us in the future, and it would keep an open line of communication to provide a cohesive plan for our community. The proposed updates for the market, this is going to be an amazing space if this comes through, and it would be year-round. We could have winter markets and gatherings. The social district can all benefit from these. One of the things I've noticed, too, though, is that the handicapped really had a say in where the parking is. They want it to be closer to After 26 on the end, which maybe that would be a solution to make that whole end area all handicap parking. The ramp is right there, it's accessible to the market, also After 26, and you've utilized front-row parking for all your handicap veterans or people that are coming in. The larger food trucks can stay in the back, and again, we can still drive around the market, making this a cohesive plan for everybody. Businesses are usually closed at night, so it's not much of a problem, but one of the things on the night market, we're supporting the bands that have been coming to Cadillac for 30 years. The reason I have the night market is so the food trucks feed the bands. That's the whole reason behind that. So one of the things is we are not seeing the community support for that. I would really love everybody to just kind of band together and come down to the commons and make it a place that's there. This year, the night market, 100% of the proceeds of all the drinks are going to the Jam and Bread Kids, the Orchestra Kids, we're bringing Community Chess Club in, all there to support these musicians. Jam and Bread Kids are going to be setting up, they're going to be learning. This is, could be a great learning facility if we all can work together on this. The Bread students will be working the market. So again, this is a great community effort, and if we all band together, we can make something really special. Lastly, volunteer Cadillac. It's something I started last year in the market because we need it. We have all of these events that are happening. We have markets, festivals, concert series. We actually rent the spaces from the city. These are put on, anything that you see happening is put on by us. Thank you. Volunteer. Thanks.
David Mackey, on behalf of After 26. So I appreciate the council's time and effort that got put into this. I know it's a lot of work. I assume that you guys are smarter than us, and you'll come to a decision that can be good to everybody. I do want it noted that we have reached out to the parties involved, have had no face-to-face conversations because they won't come to the table. We, all we're trying to do is find out that on Tuesdays and Fridays, we get killed because we don't have the parking for our staff or our customers to come in. So we have been more than willing to help on this thing, and I'm sure you guys will come to a good decision, but I think that, you know, when you rent the Farmers Market, doesn't give us a license to kill the other businesses that are there, and we want to work together, and we're hearing a lot of negativity about the depot won't play nice, that our food sucks, and so we don't send customers over there, and that's not the case. We work really hard, we've got good project workers that are there for a reason, and that's the whole reason we're there, and so we want to make this succeed, too. So we will do what we can. So please make good decisions. I'm sure you will, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Hello. Don Graves from the Amvets Post 110, right next to After 26, finance officer for that, commander for the VFW. As Dave stated, your guys' job is not easy, but wanted to make sure we also stated for the other half of that building that we're not against the Farmers Market whatsoever or anybody that uses the commons. That actually gives us exposure as well. I'm sure there's veterans that are shopping at the market as well, so it gets us exposure. Haven't seen any sort of modified parking plans or anything like that, but again, it's crucial that we keep just the 11 spots that the After 26 and the Amvets is getting to include handicap, 11 spots. Keep that for our staff and members and, and the like. Everybody is impacted by this financially as well, and we're speaking for the masses. It's not just a couple people on our staff that's asked for this, it's the Amvets, the auxiliary, the sons of the Amvets. So again, not against anything that's going on at the commons. We want to be for it as well, but we want our small piece of that square kept for those two organizations, the After 26 and the Amvets and the VFW alike. Thank you.
Can I give you this?
You sure can. I would appreciate looking at that.
That's the city's proposal, and then you can see the parking used, and then this is what the market is proposing to do.
Thank you.
Let's have the city's proposal.
And I'm here on behalf of After 26 as well, the building. I just want to thank you for, like others have said, that's not an easy job to try and mediate and everything, but I just want to encourage whatever maximizes the parking, use of parking for actual parking is what I would encourage, so just thank you.
My name is Barbara McComb. I live here in Cadillac. I am a vendor. I make and sell American Girl clothes and bring them to market. It's my little spending money over and above my limited income. I'd like to say that when we come to market, we do have rules. We are asked not to park in any of your, in any of the specific areas. In fact, I have gone to a wagon, I bring my stuff over, I unload it in my spot, and when I get ready to pack up to go home, I put everything in my wagons and haul it back to my car. Sometimes I park on the lakeside of the, the veterans and the After 26, or over in the middle of the municipal parking because I want to leave those spaces open for shoppers to come in and enjoy themselves because we are all part of the community. So we, we do live by rules over at the market, and we try to make the best of everything we can. And I have been there for many years, and when I first came in and saw all the money that was spent and the screens on the commons were broken like within six months, I was heartbroken myself because I thought all of this money that the community had put into that and with grants and what have you has kind of failed the effort, and we need to do something to make it more workable for all of us because some days we do need screens on one side of the building, or we need something more comfortable to keep out the chill of the day that we are having like today. I mean, so I just want to let you know that the vendors are concerned also about the future of the commons and, and parking. It's important to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emily Rupert. I run the market with Mary and her mom, Sheri. I just wanted to make note that we have reached out to After 26. I know they're in change of people, but we talked to the other person on the phone, and we've been working on setting up a meeting to kind of, we want to have a good relationship with them because they are a neighboring business. Another thing about the screens that she was just talking about, when the screens are up, it does allow for a lot of birds to come in, and like last year in the past, we've had, we have to clean the pigeon poop and bird poop off the floor so this way there's not, you know, as you're walking around, there are not, people aren't setting up their stuff right on top of bird poop. But anyways, about parking, as we had another guest say, she would just like the overall parking to not be limited. If we close off the first plan, should, you know, it'd be nice if we had a map pulled up so everybody can see the original plan that we talked about at our meeting earlier, and then the one that you just reprinted, you can see that we have more parking available with just our eight spots in the front, and that still leaves the handicap spots open, and overall, there would just be more parking. It'd be easier for turnarounds, it's better for safety, and also, we'd still have room for our community outreach programs like our, the 4H Comes and the Conservation District, along with our Young Entrepreneurs Group, where we allow like 18-year-olds or younger to come and have a free booth to teach them about their, running their own business and stuff. I just think it makes more sense to close down the front and leave those handicap spots open, and then open up all these other parking spaces, which was what, 27?
28.
28 other, yeah, compared to 12, 12, I think. There's 12 up here, and then it'd be the other 20 spots on the other side. So that, I think, is all.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I just want to say Cadillac Council, you guys do a wonderful job, and I know you'll make the right decisions on this. It's very sad what's on Facebook and social media, very, I mean, it just kind of makes me angry that we go that far, but you will make a good decision. The parking needs to be there. We go to After 26 quite a bit. We're able to walk from wherever, but I see a lot of their customers aren't able, they're older generation, and they need those parking places. So if there are parking places, they should be parking places, but I know you'll make the right decision, you know? Thank you for what you do.
Thank you. And the next thing we need to do is to approve the consent agenda. And this evening, we do have the minutes from our April 17, 2023 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that. Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King. Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Mayor Philkins.
Yes, motion carries. And then that takes us to communications this evening.
Yes, we have a request from Upbeat 2023 to approve a closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM on Thursdays from June 22nd through August 24th for Upbeat Cadillac.
I'll make a, go ahead.
Thank you. I'd make a motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris Street and Cass Street from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM on Thursdays from June 22nd, 2023 through August 24th, 2023 for Upbeat Cadillac.
Support.
Councilmember King. Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Philkins.
Yes, motion carries.
The next item, we have the Clam Lake Band. We have a street closure of Lake Street between Harris Street and Cass Street from 6:30 PM to 8:30 PM on Mondays from June 26, 2023 through August 7, 2023 for the Clam Lake Band concerts.
I'll make that motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from 6:30 to 8:30 PM on Mondays from June 26 through August 7, 2023 for the Clam Lake Band concert, and I'm not going to say the whole name of the Clam Lake Band.
Grudge and dark. I'll second that.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King. Mayor Philkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Next, we have the Cadillac Farmers Market, and Marcus is going to present that information.
Can you put up the concept one? And then have concept two ready.
Oh, wait a minute. There we go.
There's a way to make it a little bigger. That'd be great. Okay, thank you, mayor, and members of the city council. Before we get into part of the request regarding a banner over Mitchell Street, I'm going to go through a couple of different concepts regarding overall site plan, layout, and parking utilization around the market at Cadillac Commons, as well as share a little, little bit of background context. So the city received feedback about the importance, and I'm going to, just for everyone's reference, use a, a green pointer on this TV. It might be a little hard to see, but received feedback about the importance of trying to keep open the north side of parking for the general public, which on this concept map is shown in red, while at the same time reserving or restricting space for both After 26 and Amvets for them to park on this west side of the whole market lot. So it'd be the east side of their building, the west side of the lot. City council did make that change to restrict the parking when After 26 and Amvets is operating for it to be used by their patrons, and that does include the handicap parking spaces that are there. City council also directed staff to then work on creating additional handicap spots within the market area, especially given that some of the pre-existing spots would potentially be taken out of use, especially when we know that this facility is going to be used, whether it's being used by the Cadillac Farmers Market group or by any other group. So the city did that, and again, this map indicates where those additional spots are with the traditional H in a circle, little, little sign. Feedback that we had received back from the Farmers Market group was certainly valid regarding concerns about safety, and we also knew that the Farmers Market group tended to use this far south strip of parking for farm vendors in terms of backing up and using that as a way of supplying the market. So this concept is actually an outgrowth of a concept that was sent to them via mail last week. This concept shows how we could essentially close down the eastern drive, and also by doing that, close down the southern drive, and essentially create a corridor for the market group to use. It would allow them to have this strip of parking for vendors and/or additional booths. It would allow this east strip also to have for parking and additional booths, as well as this strip. This area here is not large enough to accommodate vehicles. It could accommodate booths. As noted, there is a dumpster here that's used by the DEQ. Doesn't mean that other people don't use the dumpster, but it's the DEQ or Eagles dumpster. There is also a dumpster here that services the After 26 Amvets facility as well. The orange that shows food trucks is just there as a placeholder. There's available spaces that were here that we showed, could be where food trucks go, but frankly, they could, they could go anywhere that they want. It also shows pedestrian corridor, a walkway through here, as well as through here. Again, it would maintain all of this open for general public parking on the north end, as well as on the immediate west end of the market. And then there's, again, an additional area here where we would notate for pedestrian crossing. If we can switch to concept two. After meeting with the Cadillac Farmers Market group this afternoon. Are we good? Thank you. After meeting with the Cadillac Farmers Market group, oops, this af, there wasn't me, was it? No. This afternoon, an additional concept was created that goes back, or at least hearkens back to their original utilization of the space. It would keep a food truck on either end of the north elevation. However, it does adjust that north elevation, so instead of utilizing the entire strip, it still maintains public, public parking, specifically handicap. it still maintains public, uh, public parking, specifically handicap parking, uh, on either end, uh, closes down, uh, the space, uh, identified in, in the purple-pink type color for them to use for, um, essentially an outgrowth of vendors, uh, for their market. Uh, it brings back to the city, uh, this entire strip that also has three handicap spots for public parking. In addition, uh, this strip that we had indicated also on the east side that we were willing to let them use would also go back for public parking. It also, uh, essentially splits this strip up. Uh, the market group indicated that they actually wouldn't necessarily need, uh, this entire strip for vendor, uh, parking, but would hold on to, uh, five spaces, uh, for some of their more aged, uh, vendors that come and participate in the market, uh, and then the rest would be able to go back to public use. It also shows, uh, that this area here would main, would be maintained as public and it's a little hard to see because this is an aerial map that shows, uh, a satellite, uh, image and there's a car here, but that's also handicap parking there as well. Uh, and then this concept also shows, uh, the purple, uh, uh, strip, just as the first concept does, that would, uh, provide for the restricted parking, continues to provide for the restricted parking for Amvets, uh, and after twenty-six, including the handicap parking that's there. Uh, the benefit to the community and to the patrons, uh, and to, uh, the adjacent businesses is that this concept has more available parking than the first concept does. The other benefit to this concept is that it shows, uh, spots that are, uh, cordoned off for safety purposes, as well as for, uh, market vendor outgrowth purposes on the north side, that is the preferred side by the Cadillac, uh, Farmers Market Group, uh, thereby keeping, uh, any and all, uh, vendors and/or food trucks and/or visitors to the market away from either of the two, uh, dumpster locations. It also keeps, uh, the flow of traffic, uh, open, whereas we wouldn't be closing down the access to the farmer, uh, to the Eagle or the, you know, the, the State of Michigan Lot, uh, immediately to the south of this. Now, their lot is reserved for State of Michigan employees during, uh, during the day, but after, uh, and I probably gonna get the time wrong, I think it might be after five o'clock there, it's open for the public. Um, but it, it, whether people park there or not, it, it certainly provides for an extra way of ingress and egress in and out of, uh, in and out of the facility. And so, the, you know, primary goal or the primary vision of the city is to try to accommodate as much public parking as we can, while at the same time, trying to make sure that we're creating some balance, uh, within this whole area. And I think it's important to note too, that, you know, this entire market facility wouldn't even be possible if not for the generosity from, from basically two primary groups. One is the Community Foundation, uh, that donated property on the east end, and, uh, the second is, uh, the Amvets, uh, organization that, Amvets owns this whole facility, uh, that donated, uh, their parking lot, uh, that used to be in this sort of rectangular space here, uh, donated their parking lot to the city. Otherwise, uh, the size of the facility and its layout, uh, frankly, wouldn't, really wouldn't have been able to happen and any structure that we would've had here would've been, in my opinion, really subpar to what, to what we see. So, what council is gonna be asked to do, frankly, is to look at those two options, um, that you have, uh, and essentially to pick one or the other. I, I believe that, uh, option two perhaps provides, uh, more balance in terms of, uh, more available public parking to the site. Uh, the compromise, if you will, in getting there is that we're still going to have at least a portion, previously it was the whole strip, but now it's just a portion of it, uh, uh, restricted for market use, but yet it shows essentially the rest of it open for, for public parking and public access, other than the, uh, the small green area here, which is five spots, and then the purple area here, uh, that is, uh, restricted or reserved for the after twenty-six and Amvets. Uh, the, uh, market group has indicated that option one really wouldn't work for their operation, given the reasons that you've heard expressed here during public comment, concerns about, uh, broken glass and other articles that are just not, not right, uh, in the area by specifically this dumpster as it's adjacent to a nearby saloon, um, as well as, you know, odors that emanate from both dumpsters, uh, concerns that it really wouldn't be appropriate for vendors to be near. Additionally, um, uh, Kerry, if you could go back to the first concept. Uh, another concern that was relayed was that if, if, uh, vendors and additional vendors and booths and whatnot were on the south end, it would kinda be out of sight, uh, from, you know, the general public, from anybody coming down Cass Street and whatnot, and would not really be usable space or, or really any space of value. So, uh, again, looking at, you know, how do we move this item forward? This option here that does have the north side open to public parking actually does reduce the amount of overall public parking on the site. And if you wanted to go back to option two, option two actually increases the amount of public parking on the site while still keeping at least closest to the businesses here, it's almost like a quarter rotation, if you will, to the, uh, to the west, keeping this area here open as additional public parking, whereas before it wasn't. So...
Marcus, I'd also, I'd also like to just interject at this moment that, um, the north parking lot would only be blocked off like that on Friday, not on Tuesday.
Yeah, good point. Yeah, thank you. So, um, great point. Uh, all, all of this in terms of the, the blocking of the parking up here, uh, would only be a, a Friday activity. So, this would go back to public parking on the Tuesday market day. Um, are there any questions council may have regarding these concepts?
Can, is it weird? Are you gonna ask?
You can't.
Yeah, sorry. Nope.
Oh, okay. Well, Brian, you're good? You're good? Okay, you're good?
So, if there aren't any questions by council at this point, I'll just give the quick debrief regarding the other two items. Uh, with respect to the banner request, uh, the State of Michigan, um, Department of Transportation requires that banners going across Mitchell Street as a state route, um, have to meet certain criteria. The Farmers Market, um, organization currently doesn't meet that criteria, so there wouldn't be action to take on that, uh, uh, in terms of this evening. Uh, we did talk with the group about that earlier and suggested maybe, uh, or they, they asked and we said, perhaps, that would be fine with us, using the market structure as a location to, to hang their banner, as long as there isn't another group, uh, that's gonna be in there at the same time. Um, the other request regarding, uh, the road closures would need to be modified, uh, pending which direction council looks at moving forward with. So, if council looks at moving forward with, uh, concept one, uh, I would argue, uh, or advise that it's probably, uh, uh, something that you wouldn't take any action on because the Farmers Market Group has advised that council one wouldn't work. Uh, if council moves forward with concept two, uh, then the recommendation or the motion should be, uh, to, uh, close down the north side driveway as presented in the, or, and as depicted in the map, um, earlier. So, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Um, if there's no discussion, would someone like to make a motion to, um, choose one or the other?
I'll make a motion to, um, adopt or to choose, I don't know if it's adopt, um, proposed parking option number two, which is the one in which the north elevation is partially closed on Fridays for the market.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Uh, yes.
King? Shippers?
Yes.
And Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Um, and, and I would just like to make a statement real quick. Um, you know, all of the, we appreciated the opportunity to meet with, uh, the Farmers Market Group today and, um, I think we're all really pleased that we were able to come up with a solution that worked for everyone and that's really what it was all about, just making sure that the people in the community who are concerned about parking, um, handicap parking, um, accessibility, um, that we address those needs and we also address the needs of the market. Um, so, uh, good work. So, thank you. Okay, Marcus?
Okay, um, we are, I believe, under the City Managers' Report at this point in time. Uh, first item is a recommendation regarding the amendment of an award amount for a, uh, screw pump replacement. Realize it's really exciting stuff. Give me a second just to get to it on, in my, uh, uh, in my, uh, information here. Um, so, this is for a, a piece of equipment located at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, the recommendation is you do, is to utilize Franklin Holwerda Company out of Wyoming, Michigan. Um, they are the lowest bidder for this project. Um, uh, when, uh, the work was finalized, it was determined that a stainless steel lower bearing access ladder and cage used to access the pump was unsafe and unusable. Uh, this is a necessary piece of equipment for ongoing monitoring and maintenance of the pump. Uh, Franklin Holwerda offered a quote to replace this ladder, uh, which will also allow him to complete work on the pump. Uh, the communication that's in your packet was back from, uh, two thousand and twenty-two, as well as the quote to replace the ladder, uh, that is also attached to the communication. Uh, this company is already on site for the project and it's recommended that we use them, uh, to replace the ladder as well. Uh, the, uh, award, uh, request is, is being requested to be amended, uh, where it was previously at two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, uh, moving it to two hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and fifty, that'll now include, uh, the replacement of that stainless steel lower bearing access ladder and cage, uh, and, uh, funds are available in our water and sewer fund for that change.
Gotta have a safe ladder.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid from Franklin Holwerda? Did I say that right?
I think so.
Company in the amount of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars.
I'll second it.
If I could interrupt real quick, I'm sorry, that amount should be two ninety-six, four fifty. The two eighty-seven was the original amount.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, I will change that to, say again, Owen?
Two nine six, four fifty.
To two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, two hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars.
Perfect.
Great, thank you.
Easy for me to say.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King? Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Uh, this next item, uh, is a briefing from our consultant with Municipal Analytics. Uh, his name is John Kazor. We had talked about him previously, uh, over, um, uh, our budgeting, uh, workshops and as a part of the budgeting hearing that the City Council hosted, I believe, at your last meeting. This is in regard to our utility rates, uh, and John is going to, uh, provide, uh, an important, uh, yet somewhat short briefing to the City Council regarding the analysis that he went through, uh, and, uh, sort of the justification for, for what's out there and how that helps frankly, um, set the foundation for the recommendations regarding the rate, uh, adjustments for both water and sewer, uh, that we've been previously talking about and later on your agenda tonight, we're requesting council to set the public hearing. So, John, if you wouldn't mind?
Good evening, all. Uh, it's always good to see democracy in work. Um, thank you for having me this evening. I will try to keep this brief and not get into the weeds at all. Uh, one can easily get there on such a, a project. We were tasked with, um, helping the city identify rate requirements, uh, for water and sewer and we are using a tool that the city has not had before to, to help with that process and I'll talk about that a little bit, uh, later. The objectives of the study were to evaluate your total costs, uh, for water and sewer and build a financial model and a rate model to evaluate the needs, uh, from rates for that purpose. And you probably know your water and sewer systems are vital to your residents, uh, and to your businesses in town to keep things going. Um, without water, we won't survive and, uh, it's nice to have a sewer system that takes things away and treats the water before it's discharged into open waterways. Modeling, on the other hand, um, is something that happens often behind the scenes and that is really trying to take your operating costs, your capital costs, uh, and try modeling where they might be going in the future, based on what we know at the present. Um, and that gives us a chance to evaluate options before you're actually making plans and implementing them. Uh, so, we are working with a six-year plan. The model can be extended quite a bit longer than that if we wanted to. Um, what are we looking at? The costs are your O and M, your operations and maintenance, um, those are your people, a, a lot of the utilities, the chemicals, um, the pumps and things that are running the systems. Um, that's a big part of your budget to keep all those systems going and maintaining the systems in good working order. Capital, on the other hand, is all of the stuff, the, the big items that make it up, um, primarily stuff that people don't see, uh, so we don't think about it until it breaks. Um, I heard once somebody describe, "When government is working properly, we are invisible." Um, nobody sees us. Uh, but as soon as government stops working, uh, in the provision of water and sewer services, everybody notices right away, um, and you hear about it. Um, so, the idea is that you maintain your system in good working order and you keep the capital side invested in, um, and you keep it going so that you're not having failures. The other big part of the finances is your debt, um, and debt is obviously a tool that's used to finance some of these big projects that require, um, substantial investments over time and it's appropriate to allocate these costs over time because customers are gonna be using a lot of these systems for fifty years or maybe a hundred years even. Um, so, it is fair to spread out some of those costs into future customers. So, we looked at establishing the rates that are gonna be necessary, uh, to fund the O and M, the capital, the debt, and also to address your, your cash needs, uh, reserves. The tool that we're using is called Waterworth, it's also called Muniworth, um, it is designed specifically to forecast, uh, utility rates, uh, and finances and in there we have some historical data that gives us a background and some trends on where things have been, helps us know where things might be going. Uh, we look at your non-rate revenues and try to anticipate again where those are going, besides where we're gonna go with rates eventually. We put in your capital improvement plan, we load in your debt, um, the tool also includes a, a long-term asset reinvestment goal. Um, oftentimes, people look at depreciation as the number to use, um, the AWW, the American Waterworks Association advises, um, that is a guideline, but honestly, it should be one hundred and fifty percent or two hundred percent of depreciation because what you put in the ground fifty years ago costs at least twice as much today to replace than it did when they put it in. The other thing we're looking at is your debt. We loaded in your debt service schedules, uh, for all of your existing debt, uh, then we looked at your cash reserve targets and set some targets based on your needs of the system, um, and then we looked at what your rate requirements would be to fund all of that. And the rate analysis includes some evaluation of equity, um, to make sure it's fair for customers. We wanted to provide some alternative analysis of what could be if we went one way or another with, uh, investments, um, and then looked at your impact on your customers of the rates. So, overall, the Water and Sewer Fund is quite healthy. Um, I deal with a lot of these systems and they're not as all as healthy as Cadillac, so, uh, I think the team has been managing things fairly well and keeping things going. Um, the challenge is always, how do you keep investing, uh, and minimize the impact on rates? Um, so, that's what we're doing through this process, is trying to understand that. You all know your current rates are a, a base charge every month, that's based on meter size, um, and then you've got a, a usage charge and on the sewer side, it's a flat usage charge per hundred cubic feet of water and on the water side, you have a five-tier decreasing block rate, uh, so, larger, high-volume users are paying less per unit of water. Uh, and there's some rationale for that in rate setting because those customers are continuing demand on the system and keeping things running efficiently, especially in a community like Cadillac that has a lot of seasonal variability and demand. Um, by having larger users, you're able to maintain a, a more efficient operation, so, the gallons or hundred cubic feet that they're using of water, um, is actually somewhat providing a savings to the city, uh, so it makes sense to have that decreasing block. What you have is generally accepted as the, a standard in, in the industry, uh, the only thing that is not so much a standard in a community this size is the five, uh, tiers on the decreasing block. Um, so, that's the one anomaly that I would say I found. So, the financial model and the rate model, like I said, we looked at, uh, six years and the reason we use six years is because it aligns... and the reason we use six years is because it aligns with your capital improvement plan. PA thirty-three requires that you have a six-year capital improvement plan. Why six years? I don't know, but that's the way the law's written. Um, so you currently have a capital improvement plan that's being proposed through twenty twenty-nine fiscal year ending twenty twenty-nine, so the model is focused on that time period because we have a good sense of what your capital needs are. They will always change. If you've been on council long enough, you know that. Um, you, you make a proposal and then it changes as you go on, um, based on your needs. We looked at water and sewer separately. You have a combined water and sewer fund, but to determine what the rates are for each utility, we kind of had to break those apart and look at them individually before recombining them. Uh, so the rates are based on an analysis of each water and sewer. We looked at the, uh, operating costs, again, based on trends, based on where we think some things are going. Each line item in the O and M budget, uh, has its own assumption, and we forecast that going forward. Uh, we layered in the debt, and again, you have debt schedules that we're basing those on, uh, and then the capital reserve or the capital improvement plan. The cash reserves, um, again, these are not policy, these are guidelines at this point. Uh, the city may want to step back at some point and reevaluate the, the reserve policies to make sure that you're comfortable with them, uh, but we try to make sure that you have enough cash on hand to meet your cash flow needs, also to be able to respond to any emergencies that you might have, uh, rather than having to run to the bank or to the bond market to, to buy, uh, some needed service. As we know, it's also nice to have cash on hand to be able to match grant money. Um, if you have a grant available that has a twenty percent match or sixty percent match, whatever it is, if you've got some money in the bank, you're allowed to take advantage of that, whereas those communities that don't have enough cash don't get to take advantage of that grant money. Uh, we looked at your, your rates, um, and again, we tried to look at what if we did this, what if we did that, uh, in terms of investments over time, and the rates are set to fund the, the current budget proposal and capital plan that's in the budget proposal that's being considered. Um, and then we also looked at, uh, smoothing rates over time. That's a big thing. Everybody likes predictability. Um, we don't like rate spikes and rate valleys where you're seeing a lot of variability, so we try to avoid that by looking long-term. This is just a quick snapshot, um, from the model that shows the, the bars, um, going up and down. Those are your revenues stacked one on top of the other. The, the area graphs in the background are your expenditures, so that blue at the bottom there, that area is your operating costs, and those are going up about average of three and a half percent in the model, uh, per year. Um, the debt service, uh, is the kind of light blue in the middle there. I don't even know what color to call that. It's almost purple. Um, and you can see out in twenty twenty-eight, that goes down, uh, as you pay off some existing debt. So, your debt service will be going down about thirty-two percent from where it is now, uh, which will free up some cash to fund capital in the future. Uh, so we want to take advantage of that. Going forward, we're looking at, um, one point four million dollars per year in water and sewer capital on average, uh, through twenty twenty-nine. There are some years when it's substantially more than that, and some years less, but on average, uh, almost one and a half million a year. Again, that will likely change as you get in and start working on streets and you start working on your systems, uh, priorities change, um, that you want to keep things, uh, aligned with what makes the most sense when you're repairing streets. If you have to fix one emergency in a street for one utility, you also want to look at the other utility while you've got the street torn up, uh, so those address some of the variability there. But what we're trying to do is make sure that the rates accommodate, uh, the capital needs over time. So, rate strategy, um, we like to encourage meaningful annual rate increases. Uh, I noticed that for the past fifteen years, there were, I think, four years, five years when you didn't increase rates at all. Um, so, we're now doing a little bit of catch-up on some of those years, but there's always a reason, um, when you don't approve a rate increase, um, that probably made sense at the time. Um, what we want to do is make sure that rates are being revised and revisited each year. The Waterworth software is a continuous rate modeling and tool, so you can constantly jump in there, check things, jump back out, update numbers, um, test what if we got this grant, what if we undertook this investment, um, in year three, say, um, we can start monitoring that much more closely. We're also planning to use, um, the, the rate of the revenues, uh, in some years, we're going to build up cash and other years, we're going to use cash. And if I go back to this chart here, kind of in the middle is this black solid line that's kind of doing a little bit of a wave. Um, that's the cash balance. We're trying to keep the cash kind of between the top dotted black line and the bottom red dotted line. Um, that's where we're, our range for cash, and it looks like this approach will get us close to that. We're also looking at, uh, debt. Um, there's possibility that in the next couple of years, you might be investing enough in your systems that you would want to issue some, a small amount of debt, um, to smooth out rates rather than having to spike up rates to pay for that. It might be an opportunity to, uh, use, do about million and a half in debt, uh, for one year. That's the only anticipated new debt in the, uh, forecast period that we're looking at. So, for the upcoming fiscal year, then we are looking at a five percent increase in water and sewer, um, and for years after that, we're looking at five to seven percent per year. And again, this is going to change as you tighten down your capital plan and you look at your operating costs each year. The model also has all of your customer usage in it, so we're able to monitor, uh, actual usage and check, uh, whether the rates are going to be sufficient based on the number of customers, uh, the number of connections by meter size, and the actual build volumes. What I will say is that I know sometimes five percent sounds a little ma- high, seven percent sounds high, but I, I'm working with a lot of communities that are seeing much greater increases than that. Um, working with one township right now that we're looking at a twenty-four percent increase, another city, twenty-five percent increase. Um, two years ago, I finished one that was a three-hundred percent increase. Um, that's because of all the deferred maintenance, uh, in their systems. It, it was also because they didn't have enough cash on hand, um, and their, their needs were immediate, um, systems were failing, and they had to make the investment immediately. So, again, by having cash in the bank, by having a long-term plan, you can avoid some of that sudden, uh, unprepared response, um, to fund those things. You've also been, uh, the city's been diligent in maintaining the systems, which keeps the costs down, and extending the life of, of your assets, uh, whether that be pumps, pipes, storage facilities, buildings, uh, equipment. Um, the more you can do to maintain those, uh, the better you will have a chance of preserving them and making them last longer. Um, always the little footnote at the bottom there, the rates are going to depend each year based on what your actual needs are. These are forecasts, um, but we're trying to do the best we can forecasting, and this is the kind of the trajectory that we're seeing right now. So, next steps, uh, you will be considering the budget in the next couple of meetings. That includes the five percent increase on water and sewer rates. Um, we would encourage you to continue planning, uh, and funding your capital projects. Um, don't, don't let too many years go by where you're not investing in capital because it does come back eventually and you have to replace it. So, it's critical that you keep that up. Using Waterworth to monitor and maintain your forecasts and looking at your rates, um, continuously will give you an edge, uh, to anticipate when things are coming up several years in advance and to start planning for that, whether it's going up for grants or anticipating a bond. Um, you'll be well ahead if you're looking down the road to do that. And then updating things every year, um, will be critical. With the software, I'm, it includes some of my time each year to help the city with maintaining that, um, so we'll be able to do that with the city and, and make sure that your rates are constantly updated, and we can plug in information as it becomes available. That's the best chance for keeping your rates low. With that, I can answer questions. I was told to keep it brief, so.
Good job.
Sorry for the non-stop talking there.
Good. No, it's, it's good.
Nothing?
Yeah.
All quiet? Have you ever recommended a city not to raise the rates?
Yes.
Oh, good. That's refreshing.[1154.97][1154.97](laughter) I don't hear that enough.
No, there, there are some where you step back and you say, "Everything looks good."
Okay.
Um, it's, it's rare, and, and again, your operating costs are going up at three and a half percent, uh, and that's a big part of your budget, so if you want to keep on top of it, you have to keep up with it.
And our, our current rates are relatively low compared to other communities, right? So, five percent for us is different than five percent for somebody paying a lot more than we are.
Absolutely. And, and a lot of systems, you are further ahead, I would say, in terms of your asset management plans, uh, than some other systems, and as those communities start looking at their assets, cambering their sewer pipes, doing evaluations of their facilities, they might be shocked with what the costs will be.
So, we should probably thank Jeff Dietlin for doing such a good job.[1209.32][1209.32](laughter)
I'll let you do that.
Thank you. And Owen.
You're welcome. Anything else? Okay.
Good, thank you.
Mayor, members of the city council, uh, the next item is the item that, uh, council added, uh, this evening, and this is in regard to a bid change order for, for paving, uh, along North Boulevard. Uh, we have an opportunity before us where we could have North Boulevard, uh, paved between one fifteen, uh, and Rose Street earlier than anticipated. It was something that we thought would be next year. Uh, however, uh, the contractor has, uh, notified, uh, that they are, uh, uh, ready to do it, uh, this year. They could do it now. Uh, however, we do need a change order to the contract that we have with them currently in order for them to acquire the additional materials, uh, and then, of course, do the work. And so, what you all have before you, uh, at your places this evening is a copy of a change order request. Uh, the change order, uh, adjusts the contract price, uh, from five hundred forty-nine thousand, two hundred twenty dollars and seventy-nine cents, excuse me, seventy-five cents, uh, to six hundred ninety-five thousand, nine hundred seventy-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Our city engineer, uh, is here and can address any questions that you may have. Um, additionally, finance could, could perhaps address any that you may have as well.
So, I understand the reason for this is because, um, because this company, it has a project in the area, and whereas we would have wa- had to wait another year to do this, where probably costs of everything will go up, um, they're able to do this now.
They're mobilized and equipped and.
That sounds like a good deal. And then the road gets done.
I think a lot of people will be excited about that.[1321.62][1321.62](laughter)
From Rose Street to M one fifteen, which I don't know.
Yes, along North Boulevard. And, and just also for reference purposes, this is a repaving. Uh, it is not a reconstruction, so this buys the city more time before we have to go back and redo the entire road, which is certainly a much more expensive, uh, project and much more time-intensive project than, than the repaving.
So, it will be quicker, too. It won't be shut down for as long, which, by the way, the new paving out there in the city is just the bomb.
And it should last several years.
I was just going to ask that question. If we do this now, what's the anticipated timeframe that we're going to have to do the total construction?
So, I might, I might be corrected, but I think it buys us at least maybe five years, maybe a little longer. It depends on, on a lot, you know.
So, is it in our six-year capital improvement plan?
Yep.
It, it is, but at least portions of it, and we're going to have to be seeking some, some help, as you can imagine, through grants and things and, and working with the engineer to figure out how to fund all that because we're talking probably retaining walls and, I mean, a lot, a lot of things to have to address.
We don't want the road to fall into the lake.
That's true. That is true, so.[1403.02][1403.02](laughter)
No, okay.
Yep, starting that work already, for sure.
I, I'll make a motion to approve the change order from the previous bid and add the North Boulevard, um, to the current contract to pave from Kennedy Park to one fifteen.
Support.
Councilmember King, Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Um, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The next two items are very similar. The first one is with regard to the setting of a public hearing that will adjust our water rates. Uh, the second is regarding the setting of a public hearing that would, um, adjust our sewer rates. As you just heard from, uh, John with municipal analytics, we are going to be recommending a five percent adjustment on both, uh, both sets of rates, uh, as a part of the, the ordinance and the public hearing, uh, for the May fifteen meeting. Um, I'm not certain if council has any other questions regarding that, but the analysis from, um, uh, from municipal analytics, uh, more than justifies that, that, that rate adjustment level. In fact, we could even look at going higher, but we feel comfortable, uh, that if we continue to, um, do our best to be as conservative as we can, that we'll be able to maintain and continue to maintain the infrastructure at the high level that we have been, um, that will be okay. Uh, there's other options down the road we can also look at, such as bonding, uh, that can potentially, um, lower future rate increases, but at least for the interim, we are going to be continuing to recommend what we, what we began recommending as a part of our overall budgeting, um, uh, communications were, and that's a, a five percent adjustment. So, uh, Owen or Jeff, is there anything you guys want to add to that?
I don't think so. Not, not at this time. We'll, we'll.
We'll talk about it at the hearing.
We'll again make a small presentation prior to the next.
Like a six-year, ten-year projection? Are we going to do the six-year, like, or our ten-year, like, for the, uh, anticipated rate increases?
Yeah, so we can show the charts. We would, we would only present the first year for, uh, for approval. We wouldn't necessarily recommend that.
Yeah, just the table.
Yeah, yeah, we'll certainly show all that. Yep, a good amount of data.
Smoothing as being.
Yeah, so the, the model itself, the software that we subscribe to as part of the study, will have some really valuable information that is, it's pretty simple even to update year over year, so. That was part of the reason why we went with, with John's firm to do that is because it came with that software package, so.
Great.
So, the first item is a request to set the public hearing regarding water rates for May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution, um, two thousand twenty-three dash three four nine five, to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh three and set a public hearing for May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King, Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Mayor, members of city council, second item, same thing, for sewer rates, same date, uh, May fifteenth.
All right, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-four ninety-six to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-three dash four and set a public hearing for May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Support.
Councilmember Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King, Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Uh, final item under the city manager's report this evening is a request to set the public hearing that establishes our General Appropriations Act for fiscal year, uh, twenty twenty-four. Uh, that meeting date would also be May fifteenth. That is required by charter, not the specific date, but it's within the period of time that's required. Uh, and this is the last hearing, is a part of the overall budgeting process. You did have your budgeting public hearing at your last meeting.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-four ninety-seven to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh five and set a public hearing for May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Support.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King, Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, this evening in our packets, we do have the minutes and/or reports from the Cadillac Area Arts Council, and then also the Downtown Development Authority that we can, uh, review at our leisure. And at this time, we'll open the floor for our second public comment. Um, rules are same as the first.
Can I write my name down again?
No.
Okay. Well, I just want to say thank you. Thank you to all of you for listening to our concerns, for working with us. It gives me a lot of hope in growing the biggest market in the north over the next few years and really kind of making an event that really helps tourism and community outreach here in this area. So, thank you all very, very much. Um, and I would also like to say to Owen Roberts, I watched, uh, your big report meeting a few weeks back, and it is really hard to understand those things as someone who spent their life farming and teaching preschool, um, but you made it very, very easy to understand every bit of your report, and it really made me more interested in watching further, um, city council meetings, whether that's from home or probably will be from home. Um, but, yeah, thank you for making that really coherent. Um, that was really nice for me to kind of understand all that information, but really, thank you. One more question that popped into mind as we were going over those maps. If, and I can email you about this, but just to put it in your mind now since we're all here, if I am to have food trucks on a Tuesday, which is something that the community does request a lot, where should I put them? Because we didn't have that in our map. For, you know, we just said on Tuesday, so I, but I will email you.
We don't, we don't talk during public comment, but I'll address that during good of the order at the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to finish my last statement, if that's okay. Um, I basically was going to say, "A full symphony consists of many instruments playing different parts at the same time, yet they come together to create beautiful music, which you can experience in person this Sunday for the fiftieth anniversary of the Cadillac Symphony." experience in person this Sunday for the 50th anniversary of the Cadillac Symphony Orchestra at 3:00 in the high school gym." I just wanted to get that in there. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the good of the order. And I'll just go ahead and address that question that was there. And on Tuesdays, if you bring in, if they bring in the food trucks, we'll simply put them somewhere like at the east side of the parking lot, cinema side, or, okay? That works?
Yeah, I don't think they'd have any problem with that.
Okay. All right. We can talk about it more, though.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to go.
I have one item, if I may.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The city council, and I think the public all knows, that our wind screens suffered catastrophic or fatal blows late last fall.
Fatal sounds really bad.
Yes, and during this winter, to the point where they are not repairable. They would need to be replaced, and it's a system that we have learned just did not work for the market in the wind-type conditions that exist over there. That being said, the city council is well aware, we have put in for a rather significant grant to bring in a, what I would characterize as a much more permanent solution with an overhead door system. The grant also would include the provision of permanent bathroom space that could be used by the market and by the, you know, plaza and by other people. What I want to mention is that absent those wind screens right now, we now have a bird problem. There's nesting, there are birds flying in and out. Before, we were able to prevent all of that because the screens were always down, and therefore, birds couldn't get in, or at least not get in and nest. The city weekly goes in and power washes that market floor, but it's as if five minutes after we do it, it's as if we never did it at all. So it is a problem. We're aware of it. We're going to do whatever we can to try to mitigate this as best as possible, whether that means looking at putting in some kind of fish wire, you know, removal of the nests, looking at a deterrent system, but until such time that we're able to close the market off in terms of a door or screen-type system, you know, it's going to be a battle that we're going to have to fight, and we're going to do so to the best that we can. So I just wanted to mention that we're well aware that it's an issue that we're going to have to engage on really quick, so.
I think I would just like to say that problems are never solved with diatribes and vitriol on public social media, and that if there are issues that people have that need addressing, those can be solved by meeting, by setting up a meeting, by asking to speak to the people who make the decisions, and then have viable, workable solutions that actually meet the needs of the community. As a public servant in this community, I've received, you know, threats, terrible comments, and I know others of us have as well, based on either partial or false information that was shared all over social media, and to the extent that my family was concerned for their safety. So I would just like to say that if you have an issue, if you have a problem, please, the people here are so good at their job, and we do a pretty good job ourselves. Please come talk to us. We can solve the problems. We can make it work. But this business of mustering rallying troops and mustering vitriol and hatred on the social media to try to, I don't know what, I don't know how, creating that sort of environment made it more possible for solutions, it never does. As a matter of fact, it was, anyway, just my two cents. Please speak to us, and we will work with you. But seriously, we are not bad people, and we don't have a secret society that's telling us what to do. We are listening to the people in the community, all of the people in the community, and we will do what we feel is best for the people in the community based on the communications, the real communications that we receive. So, there.
I'll add a little bit to that. Good comments.
Thank you.
The communication between Ms. Galvanic and the city, like you said, everything turned out fine. The water and sewer rate hikes, if you're tired of them, as I am, I'd recommend people show up May 15 to the next meeting and express their views. If you don't, that means you don't care and you're okay with the tax rate hikes. Get up here and talk to us. We do listen. That's been proven at this meeting. Everything turned out fine. But if nobody shows up, I might vote yes on the tax hike, which is unheard of.
Right.
Right, yeah.
I'll believe it when I see it.
I got my fingers crossed.
I'll believe it when I see it.
Fee for service.
I'm just telling you.
Fee for service. It's not a tax.
Get up here and talk to us and tell you.
It's a rate.
I've said this before, that microphone is intimidating, but get up there and tell us what you think.
Right.
I didn't promise that, though, Carl.
I just wanted to say, you heard Mary say that she met with council. What she actually did was meet with the mayor.
Yes.
And councilmember Shippers and the city manager, and they did a good job coming to a resolution, so thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you both very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything else? If not, we have to make a motion to go into closed session this evening.
Oh, good. I'll make a motion to move to closed session.
I'll second that.
To, yeah, I always forget that. To.
Councilmember King.
To discuss, to discuss a written confidential legal opinion with the city attorney.
Okay. Councilmember King. Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Philkins.
Did someone support that?
I support.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
There you go.
With that, we'll go ahead and adjourn.
No, we don't have to vote?
Nope.
Very good.
Vote on what?